On Thursday, February 24th, I will call the order of the meeting and queue order of the Bellevue Planning Commission. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please.
Madden.
Kane.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gladbeck.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Ritz. Thank you.
We have quorum here. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestal of the hearing room. At this time, I would ask that all commissioners and audience members please silence or turn off your cellphones or any other electronic devices that could disrupt our proceedings. Also, if you would note, the emergency exits are behind you and out the door that way. And also that door out there, if you would take a turn to the right. There's also a defibrillator out there on the corner should we need one. And if you need to dial 911, please let me know and I'll get with staff and we'll get 911 dialed as well. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes for December 15th, 2016. Or January.
So long.
January 26th. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any additional comments? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'd entertain any accepting records, all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates?
No.
Do we need a motion or second on that since we have them?
Make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept, a second, a second by Christine Smith. All in favor, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
We have one consent item tonight, that is a request to amend Section 7-5 of the City of Bellevue subdivision regulations regarding minimum design standards for the sidewalks. Applicant is the City of Bellevue. City of Bellevue, would you like to make any additional comments? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on that matter? Okay, we'll leave that on the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion to move, to approve the consent agenda.
I had just one question for staff, I guess. What's the theory on having it 6.5 feet back instead of four? Five feet wide, I understand. I guess what's the theory on pushing it farther away from the street?
Basically, that's kind of the standard that Omaha and the metro area has adopted. And it helps with ADA requirements and facilitates the wider sidewalk, having it farther away from the street so that if you have people walking side by side, you have a wheelchair. It's just a safety issue and ADA.
Thank you.
Great. Any comments? Okay.
And as a point of clarification, this is for new subdivisions only, or?
Correct. This would only apply, if this is approved by city council, it would only apply to subdivisions submitted after that date.
Any other quick questions or comments? Okay. If hearing none, if not, we'll move for a motion to approve this. We got a motion, a second. I think we're lacking. We have a second?
Motion to approve, as written.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gladbeck. Okay, all in favor, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Yeah, and we'll go to the city council for a public hearing on March 13th, 2017. We have one public hearing meeting this evening. I will announce the case and then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present the request. After the request has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that would like to consider, have considered in the record. Those testifying, if you would, come forward, sign in, spell your name, and announce it, pronounce it for the record. Testimony will be limited to three minutes and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people here. After any testimony has taken place, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, after which time we will close the public hearing and the commission will announce their wishes. Our first public hearing is a request to rezone lots 1 through 9. Rob's Hilltop Acres 3 is being platted of part of the west half of the southeast quarter section 21, Township 13, range, north range 13 east of the 6th Principal Marine Station, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RA for the purposes of single-family residential development. Small subdivision plots 1 through 9, Rob's Hilltop Acres 3, and waiver of Section 6-2, Paragraph 13, 6-4 subdivision regulations. Applicants are Steve and Cass Robb. General location is Millard Road and Dyson Hollow. The case number is Z-7101-01 and S-1701-01. Staff, any updates?
No, but I'd like to take a step back. You said the public hearing at council for the last item was March 13th. It'll be March 27th.
March 22nd, okay.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, thank you.
Thank you.
And hearing no updates for the second ones? Applicant, would you like to come forward and stand, sign in, please?
Hi, I'm Joe Dutlos with Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner, representing the applicant. 103, or 10836 Old Mill Road, here to answer any questions if you have any.
Would you like to go into any sort of general description of this for the record and for the, any of the people that are here that have not looked at too much detail of the package?
Sure. What's proposed is subdividing this piece of land into nine, nine units, or nine lots, all three acres or more. We're also proposing a cul-de-sac that comes off of Dyson Road. Enter on the north, northeast part of the lot there, correct. And then come down. What we're proposing there is just have a gravel road. It's been reviewed by the fire department. They're okay with, we've asked for waivers for the length of the cul-de-sac, which exceeds 600 feet. They've reviewed it. They approved it. They have no issues with it. The other waiver is the design standards for concrete using gravel road instead of concrete. And since Dyson Road is gravel right now, there was no objection to that waiver. And that's about it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me, or?
We might in a few minutes. We'll ask you to have a seat and stand ready and we'll ask if there's any other comments from the general public and then we may have you back again.
Okay.
Asking questions. Great, thank you. Is, at this time, is there anybody from the public testimony that cares to provide testimony on this public, on this meeting? In favor or opposition, please come forward and state your name and sign in.
Hi, I'm Andy Tracy. I live at 1622 Dyson Hollow, which is Lot 5, immediately south. Lot 5 of Oak Ridge Estates was immediately south of Lot 1 of this replat. And I actually bought my land from Stephen Cass, so I know them. My concerns are most-
Before you get started, could I ask you, have you signed in, please?
Oh, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Could you also spell your name for the record?
Andrew Tracy, T-R-A-C-E-Y.
Thank you.
Although Steve and I have talked about this and I'm not exactly happy about having neighbors to the north, but we're working out something on that. But my concerns go towards mainly like having nine more houses on Dyson Hollow Road. We already have a lot of traffic and like this morning, not this morning, Monday morning with that quarter inch rain, I run every day out on Dyson. And it gets rather sloppy and messy and muddy. We already have a lot of traffic from the lake and from the horse stable that's just south of our place on the east side of the road. So I wondered if, and I realize it's a county problem, not a city problem, but is there going to be some compensation for the increased traffic, especially during construction, when I can expect lots of heavy equipment and things like that going into that area? I'm concerned about Dyson Hollow Road getting even muddier and messier than it is on a usual basis. I also have some concerns, and Steve and I have talked about this, about nine more wells and nine more septic systems in that area. I'm not a hydrologist or anything, so I don't know how all that stuff works, but I'm just curious about that. What was the other thing I had? I have a lot of notes, but, oh. I understand that there was a discussion with the fire department on this, but was it a discussion with the Bellevue Fire Department or the eastern Sarpy County Fire Department? Which I realize our part of the county is serviced by Bellevue, but do you know who that was with? Okay, since they do service it, but it's contract-
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
You need to address your comments up here and then-
Oh, then you'll ask the questions, Roger? Okay, sorry, I just know them, so. Okay. So I just want to make sure it was addressed with eastern Sarpy, realizing it's serviced by Bellevue. Since technically my taxes go to them and then they sublet it to Bellevue. And I guess those are my main things that I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to come forward and get a question asked and/or make any comment on this topic? Please sign in and state your name.
My name's Tyler Adamson, A-D-A-M-S-O-N.
And your address?
16212 Dyson Hollow Road.
Thank you.
Lot 4, Oak Ridge Estates. I think the only thing I'll mention to echo everything that Andy said and to add in addition to is really we have some drainage concerns. We have a pond down in Oak Ridge Estates and if the topography was dramatically changed or the drainage was changed, that might basically render that dry or negatively impact that. So really just want to talk or have a discussion about if there's going to be any negative impact to drainage. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Once again, I'll ask anybody else from the public, one comment, for or against? Okay, seeing none. The applicant, would you like to step forward and respond to any of the issues that were raised?
Joe Dutlos, Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner. As far as the wells and the septic systems, they'll be designed according to the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services or have the appropriate radiuses, so the concerns, I understand that there might be some concerns with downs, being downstream, but they'll be built according to the standards, so it won't negatively impact downstream residents or neighbors. As far as the mud out, track out, you know, will, as development goes, there should be lot level erosion control, stabilized construction entrances, silt fences for each developer. Be on them to do that and regulate. And if there's, if there's issues that's excessive, as more than it is now, then, you know, I'm sure we'll try to, try to mitigate those issues as they're coming along. And as far as the topography, you know, we'll put in the, put in the cul-de-sac, but we're not planning on changing grades a whole lot out there. So everything would just kind of be naturally where it's going today, so.
Great, thank you. Close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission. What are the wishes of the commissioners?
Couple of questions and comments, I guess. Question for staff on the waiver for the design of the road that's strictly with regard to not having to have aggregate or concrete as opposed to the width and all the other requirements for-
Correct. They're requesting the waiver specifically to allow for the gravel. Staff is okay with that since Dyson Hollow is an unimproved rural section.
Okay. And in terms of, I believe it was Mr. Tracy, one of the concerns you had was on the wells and the septic. The applicant responded and that is correct. Basically, the state requires you to go through perk tests and they make sure that you're not going to have your septic too close to anybody's wells. And if they pass that, then they're allowed to install them. These folks are obviously taking the chance that if they subdivide and go through the process and they can't pass the perk test, they're going to have a lot that's not able to sell. So that gets taken care of with the state process. Also in terms of, I guess, the construction and the movement of earth and dirt, regulations have gotten a lot heavier the last three years in terms of the silt fence requirements. And there's a whole industry that has grown up now on basically charging contractors to meet those requirements and they come out and check it every so often, quite regularly. And they have to report back into the municipalities on it. So again, is it going to change your life temporarily while that's happening? Absolutely, as any development does, but very regulated as to how they do it. And I'm confident they'll have to follow the requirements on that. Mr. Chair?
Please, go ahead. If you can step up to a microphone and announce your name again if you would.
Tyler Adamson. And I think the original concern was really Dyson Hollow, not the development on the actual land. So the silt fences and the, what the gentleman addressed was the erosion control while people are building homes. But what do we do, what is going to be done about Dyson Hollow itself and the erosion and the extra heavy equipment? And the road itself is already in pretty poor condition. So what is going to be due to mitigate the extra wear and tear to that road specifically?
Great, thanks for clarifying that. I had assumed that you were talking inside the development itself. A general comment from staff?
The county will monitor that during the construction. And Pat Douse, the, one of the county engineers of the county surveyor's office, reviewed the subdivision and they review or keep track of things as construction happens. So if there are issues, if somebody tearing up Dyson Hollow Road, they will take care of that. Yeah, they monitor that.
So Mr., should you check? I have the same questions that Mr. Ackley had, but then, so if the gravel on the road, how often is it checked by the county? Do you have any ideas? Annually, semi-annually?
On Dyson Hollow Road?
On any, yeah. Well, I guess we'll go with Dyson Hollow because this is-
I don't know how often they go out there and, you know.
And check.
Check it. But obviously, if, you know, we've got people out there who will be keeping an eye on it and can report to the county if there are issues with the road, damage to the road as a result of construction and the subdivision.
And it would seem to me, and to the audience and the speakers, that if you're having difficulty with the gravel, with drainage and all of the things that go with having gravel road, and it's not specific, since it is a county responsibility, I certainly would contact them and ask or question. You know, sometimes the more we annoy those in charge, the more we do or don't get done, but we could try, so.
Great, thanks. Any other comments from the commissioners or questions?
Just one quick question for staff, and I mentioned this just a little bit earlier, but minimum frontage width on a lot, I noticed the only lot I'm concerned about is Lot 5. And I guess I've seen those as flag lots. You've got more than about a 30-foot wide access onto the new roadway. But this one, as far as I can tell, I mean, you've got a 33-foot on the south side, but then maybe 10 feet coming from the east. And I don't know if that's going to be sufficiently wide enough to get them good access to their lot. But I can't find anything in the zoning code that says it.
The lot frontage requirement of the zoning ordinance in this zoning district is 150 feet. It's measured at the building setback line and something, so you can visualize that. More, if you visualize a cul-de-sac or more of a pie-shaped lot that you might have at the end of a cul-de-sac, whereas the frontage actually at the property line is narrower than if the property widens out, the building setback line can have, that's where the frontage requirement is measured at. And in this location, the building setback line on Lot 5 can face either south or east, depending on which way the house is facing. And in either of those cases, the 150 feet is met.
I don't see how. So if it's 35 feet back on, from the south, you're 33 feet wide. You step back 35 feet, there's no way you're going to be 150 feet wide. I'm trying to figure out how that calculation works. I understand the pie shape on a cul-de-sac, but not on a square lot. So you're 33 feet wide coming from the south.
We would measure, the setback would be from either this, the south line or the east line.
Correct.
And if the house is just sitting right here, you know.
There's no way there's 150 feet there.
It's not, it's based on, I mean, say, we would measure it based on one of the lot lines.
Mm-hmm. I get that. So if you're 33 feet wide and you offset parallel to that 35 feet back, you're still 33 feet wide. So do you see what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is how that width fits?
I understand what you're saying. I'm just, you know, a way to explain it to you.
I guess I've been in subdivisions that have the same layout and it's become a long-term access issue, not at plating, but 20 years down the road. So that's why I'm asking this question.
I think, no, we're trying to, Tammy, would you? As we're discussing, and Tammy would review all the building permits. We would measure it either along here or along here, not from that point.
But I mean, it's a, it's a lot width requirement. So I'm just used to seeing flag lots. You'd have an alleyway that meets your 150-foot requirement in width, but you don't have that in this situation. I'm just worried about access to Lot 5 because it could become challenging depending on grades to get in there. So is, I don't know, is there a way to just tweak it? You're not going to lose any lot size. Just change that corner so that they meet that 150-foot requirement?
We, I can talk to Mr. Robb and Mr. Dutlos. We can look that and make sure that-
You just check it. I'm just concerned with what I see now.
Okay. I'm sure it goes through okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Adamson, one of the neighbors expressed a concern about drainage and a particular concern about possible impact on a pond in the neighboring development where he lives. Will there be, as part of the development process, approval of a drainage and grading plan that would address those issues?
Yes, basically, as part of the process of putting the road in, they will have to do a grading permit that'll have to go through our public works department. That'll have to be approved by them. That's something that will be looked at. Obviously, they can't negatively impact their neighbors to the south.
And also, as Mr. Ackley mentioned, with each building permit, there's a stormwater permit that is applied for and is approved regarding runoff. And that is inspected by, actually through the City of Omaha. So they have the people who can do it. So runoff and damage to the existing pond, they shouldn't be an issue. And there is a method that it is addressed.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed? Sorry.
This discussion prompted a question. So we're not allowed to speak anymore?
Yeah, we've closed the public hearing unless one of the commissioner wishes to ask a clarifying question of somebody that's already been up.
I'd be willing to have you come up. You spent your time to come out tonight. If we got questions we can answer, come on up. You got to state your name for the record and-
Sign in and all that, please.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Fries. I live at 16226 Dyson Hollow Road. And the question that came up is you begin to discuss the grading and at what point in the development process are there restrictions applied for somebody introducing another water feature or something that would affect both the water table if they sourced it from groundwater or significantly altered the drainage pattern into the existing? There's a pretty good sized ravine in there and then it drains into that pond to the south. Are there restrictions during the development of the individual lots that would preclude somebody introducing those features that would negatively impact the downstream areas?
Again, yeah, during the home building process, there is a, it's called a stormwater protection, stormwater protection plan. There's a permit that is issued through our permits department and our public works department. They review the grading and it is checked after each rainfall event to ensure that everything is the way it should be. I mean, say, yes, those safeguards are in place so that the drainage does not negatively affect the existing pond. There's also, that appears to be an area where the Corps of Engineers might have an issue with anything being, affecting the drainage or the ditch itself. So anybody wanting to do anything with the actual ditch would have to have a permit from the Corps of Engineers as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fries, can I please have you spell your last name for the record?
F-R-I-E-S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd actually like to respond to something Mr. Ackley said. Out of the discussion, I apologize.
Oh, you're, come on up. You guys spent your time to come out. You're all right.
Tyler Adamson. One thing that you said in response to one of our questions was health and human services is going to basically make sure that all the septic tanks are official, are okay.
Correct.
Because from a perk test standpoint, my well is not very good. So I'm actually questioning if someone were to put in another well, is there the potential that they could get into the same aquifer upstream and reduce my flow? So not septic related, but more well. What kind of assurance can I personally get that that won't happen?
Absolute assurance is none. Your well could fail at any time, the way it currently is, regardless of whether development goes around it. But the way the new folks drilling their wells, I mean, they're going to get, go down to a certain level where they get water table and pressure. And again, the folks that do that for a living are going to say this should be a good well. Similar to, I assume, when you drilled your well, they got to a point where they said there should be enough pressure for so many.
But no hydrology study or anything. You're basically just saying whoever's going to drill the well is going to determine if it's acceptable or not.
That's, I guess, Mr. Gladbeck. I don't know if you've got any additional familiarity with the well drilling, but again, on a five-acre parcel, it's a-
It's more of a civil question, but.
Plus, you got the plat pretty darn close there.
Want me to take a shot at? Go ahead. So, I mean, water rights are a big deal. Underground water rights are hard to determine. With residential wells, typically, just like with any well, when you drill into a water, to an aquifer and start pumping water out of it, you're going to create a cone. And that cone's going to affect the quality of your well. As too, as you remove the water from the ground, pores that used to be filled with water are going to empty and then that's going to kind of collapse the ground. And so wells are always trying to plug up and quit working. A residential well 600 feet from another residential well should not, you're never going to flow enough to really see, I don't think, a cross impact from that. Other than just once you put more and more wells in an aquifer, you're going to affect the aquifer in overall. Depending on how it recharges, if we have a dry year, your well may be dry. If you have a wet year, it may be okay. And the only way really to fix that is to redrill or go deeper. Sometimes you can blow them out. That'll fix the problem as well. But it's a, it's a- Sometimes you can blow them out, that'll fix the problem as well, but it's a, it's an ongoing maintenance, so just having a well does not guarantee water forever, it's just that there's going to be maintenance as to the structure of the wa, ground around the well, the depth of the aquifer because of the pumping, all of those things are going to affect it, but typically with residential wells, you don't see that level of impact like you would with an agricultural well.
So, thank you very much for the, the description, that helps a lot. Kind of what I heard you say, though, is more wells equals bad for the aquifer. So what, how can we get some assurance that nine is not too many?
Well, the NRD managed, so when they grant a well permit, the NRD has decided how mu, how many wells can be in an aquifer.
Okay.
When they reach that limit, they cut it off.
Okay, all right.
So if the NRD approves, and obviously, they haven't permitted these wells yet, if that aquifer is over-appropriated, then they may not approve any additional wells. If it's under-appropriated, they're going to say it's okay, because the volume of the aquifer will support additional load, but that's an NRD question, and not really have to do with the plat.
Again, sorry, but you answered my question, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Time well spent. Any additional comments from the commissioners?
Alls I know is I just learned that you have to go to an engineer and not an architect on those questions.
Okay, so what are the motions of the commission at this time? You have a motion?
Unless anybody's got additional questions or comments, I'd be ready to make a motion to approve, based upon the performance of the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and comprehensive plan, as well as the lack of the perceived negative impact around the surrounding area, and also to take the recommendations with regard to the waivers of the regulations as presented in the application.
All second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. We have a motion in a second to approve the request to rezone lots one through nine. Make sure I get this right, Tom, I echo your motion correctly. Rezone lots one through nine, Robbs Hilltop, Acres Three, being platted part of the west quarter section, southeast quarter section twenty-one, Township thirteen, Range thirteen, East Sixth Primary, in Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RA, for the purposes of single-family residential development. Small division plats, lots one through nine, Robbs Hilltop, Acres Three, and a waiver of section six dash two, paragraph thirteen, and six dash four subdivision regulations. Did I pretty well cover that?
Accurately stated.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, please vote. Motion carries?
All in favor, motion carries.
Let comms for faster, sorry. Okay, the motion was approved. This will go to the city council for public hearing on March twenty-seventh. Is that correct? Great, thank you. That concludes the public portion of the meeting. We'll move on to our other portion of the meeting, which is current business, which are welcome to stay, or at this time, you can go out into the cold rainy night. I'd like to thank the public for showing up tonight.